Good evening. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council. This time I'll call the meeting to order. And our invocation tonight, be the next item Reverend Dan Blair from Fellowship and First Methodist Church in Hamlet. Reverend Blair, we're certainly glad to have you with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to be here with you all. Let us pray. Almighty, most merciful God, we acknowledge this night that your ways are higher than our ways. Your thoughts are higher than our thoughts. We pray, oh Lord, that you would give those making decisions tonight some insight into your thoughts, into your will. Pray that all that is done this night would represent what is just and what is fair and what is right in your eyes. And we ask your blessings upon all that is done this night and to lift this up in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, council, we have before the agenda for tonight. I would ask that item 7A regarding funding for sewer project and item 7B for the resolution to be added to the agenda.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. Do I have any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. Council, you have before you the minutes from the special meeting, the closed session, and the regular meeting. Need approval. What are your wishes on that?
I make a motion we approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second? Any changes, additions, deletions? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. Thank you. Move along to item number five, comments from attendees. If there's anyone here tonight that has anything they need to bring to our attention, that's not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name.
Chip Gordon. I wanted to say thank you for the support for Hamlet Post 49 so far. And with your continued support, I feel like we can grow this program back to where it once was. And as a token of our gratitude, I'd like to give you all a shirt that we, that all the players wore. I know Mr. Martin gave me your sizes, but I've since lost that sheet of paper.
That's alright.
So I just brought a whole bunch of sizes. But, okay, yeah, I have a whole bunch. If you have extra, leave them out amongst whoever you, you would want to. Where are you going to send them?
That's fine. Just give them to the city manager.
Chip, that'll be fine.
But, once again, I'd like to say thank you for the support you've given us so far and your continued support. I know we'll build this program back to where it once was.
We appreciate what you have been doing over there. It's wonderful. And understand that you're looking maybe to some tournament next year here?
Yes, sir. Area 2, which is the area we're in, is slated to host the state tournament in 2023. And area, no team in Area 2 has wanted to host it for a long time. And I was, I've been speaking with several coaches in the area. And I've spoke with the state director and the Area 2 commissioner. And they're all on board with us hosting the tournament in 2023, which I think will be a great thing for not only Hamlet, but Richmond County as well.
Okay, just keep us advised of what we can do to assist you on that.
Yes, sir. I will be, I'll be in contact with Matt and you all as well. And we'll do our best to get the ball rolling.
And thank you for the shirt.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else tonight? Please come forward and state your name and...
Howard Wallace here again. And again, I'd like to echo my predecessor's comments to thank the council for its very decisive action that it has taken on Pine Street. We got a call from the city manager last week indicating that action is being taken, positive action, constructive action. And that for us, it was like Christmas coming in August. Santa isn't here, but the reindeer are suiting up, so we know that some action's going to be taken. In light of that, I would like for the council to consider a motion to take into consideration the other two Eaton properties located adjacent to Pine Street. They're all in the same condition, dilapidated. They all are in a state of total disrepair, totally delinquent ownership. And if possible, I so move that the council consider the same action with those properties that it is taking at the one next to 408. And for the council's review, I took a couple of photos, but my black, my color ink cartridges ran out. But you can get the idea of what they look like. I'd like to present this to the council if I can, but just their review.
Okay, certainly.
I apologize for my ink going low, but you can see, they all look just like that, just like the house in this.
Where are the other properties located? Did you say they were adjacent to the?
They are, they're adjacent to, I live at 408. I think 412 is the house in question that Matt took, is acting on. Next to that house is one of the properties. And directly across the street is this, all right together. There's one other property owned by the Eaton or passed on to the Eaton's that's, that's being occupied on West Street. It is not in a delinquent state. His son, the Eaton's son, has moved there. Just give me a little history here. I grew up on Pine Street. The Eaton who owns the properties also grew up on Pine Street. The properties actually belonged to his father. There were three of them.
Mr. Tom Eaton.
Mr. Tom Eaton.
We know him. I knew him.
And the properties were passed down courtesy, and is now the, I guess, the legal owner of the properties. Since owning the properties, inheriting the properties, he's taken no action to improve anything. He has, however, collected rent from time to time, which I doubt if he's reported as any income. But he has done nothing to improve the property, let him become in the state that you see in these pictures. And we're finally getting some action on one of the properties, but why not take action on all three now that we're considering? Why not? And the city can seize control of the properties, auction the land off to help cover for the, help cover the cost of demolishing the property. So that would be my motion, that the council consider all three Eaton properties, that you seize control, auction them off, recover some of the costs for demolishing. Thank you very much for your time.
I would like to say, I've gone through that commute neighborhood. And it's not just Pine Street, a high street. You go up there, you see it, Spring Street.
I'm with you.
And you go up there, are you with me? Washington, you come up to it.
Absolutely right.
It's really, really bad. And it comes back and it comes in, and I would be afraid of animals being wild dogs. Anything could be happening. People hiding.
You know, the disappointing thing about, the, being that you brought that up. The most discouraging thing about the whole area is that when you grab down Pine Street, cross 177, head up Pine Street towards Monroe Avenue, that is one of the most depressed areas you've ever seen. And people have to drive up that street and drop that elementary school, children off to school.
Sure.
God forbid they should have a flat tire. They would be scared to death.
Well, look at, look at Washington Court Apartments, what it's turned into. You look at Washington Court Apartments, that comes in, it's, the boarded up, the windows are boarded up. It's, it's bad. And, and I have a lot of compassion with you for it. I would hate to have to live in there or had.
Well, I will commit to the council one thing here. When and if I become a millionaire, that will be my first donation to the city of Hamlet. Get involved in reconstruction of that area.
Well, let me just say this, and I know we have to keep bringing it up. We don't have the money.
I understand.
And that's first. Second thing is, if anything we do to it, we don't get any money back for it. The county does.
That's why I suggested maybe auction, auction off the properties and maybe that would be the first.
Well, the county would have to do that. We don't have it.
We don't go to us. It goes to the county.
See, we're caught.
There's no return on our investment whatsoever.
Plus the fact they took all that money from us last year, which doesn't give us any extra money anyway.
Right.
But they are, anything, they, they got first lien on the property. If they sell the property, they get the money back. We don't get a penny of it.
Get out of here. Okay, well, if, if this property next to us is torn down and if we're fortunate enough to get the other one torn down.
Now, we scraped the money together to do this one, because it's a hazard to houses next door.
I understand. And that's why I came here personally to thank the council for the action. I think that was just a huge step forward.
We feel your pain.
And nobody say that this council doesn't deliver action, because they do. And I want to, I want to be one of the people that support you all in your next reelection campaign. So let me know.
It frustrates us. You just don't know how bad when we need to do something and don't have the money to do it.
But thanks again.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming tonight. Next, next person. Come on, tell your name.
Hey, guys. Tim Brown, 506 Entwood Street. First off, I want to apologize. I was here a couple of months ago and kind of insinuate, you don't know what you're doing, and she was the financial wizard. We just need somebody with you young sharpshooters coming out of school with these great educations to, if you should move on, like the last fella did. We got somebody on board that knows what was going on and how to pick up the loose ends. That's what scares me. Because, you know, everybody's, you know, you're on your, you're on your careers. It's a great career and, you know, I don't know what the, it's a trap for old towns. You can't compete with the money that the bigger towns, and you guys naturally want to build a reputation and move on. So I'm glad we have Abby here to just kind of have a breast of it. There might be other people that are equally, but she's the only one I know of that personally there's on it. Thank you for taking care of that. I mentioned a couple of months ago also, that's good news to hear that getting taken care of. At least we're on a far eight step there. The water treatment funds, I know we're upgrading. Entwood Street, ever since we moved in there, we had, when we initially moved in there eight years ago, we had to put three hot water tanks in within seven months. Because there was so much sediment coming into our house from the line, and mostly it was black gritty gasket type materials that were burning up my elements. I had the guys up look at it back then, and they said, yeah, that's what's doing it. This is the oldest water line in Hamlet. As what the foreman back then told me. Does it, does this funds for the water treatment facility expansion? Could it help improve infrastructure in the streets? Could it be applied to some of those? Because we don't even drink, we haven't drank the water since then, because we always, our toilet bowl, you see black crumbs in it all the time. Either floating or a sediment that forms on the bowl three times a week is, you see it at least in there. So we've been buying bottled water for years now. I just put an RO system in because I just got tired of buying bottled water. But for my neighbors I've talked to, everybody's experiencing the same kind of thing in their toilet bowls. A black grimy, refined black powder either floating on the water or settling down in the bowls, and people are drinking this water. And that, that is, so when I heard about the expansion money for the water treatment plant, I wasn't sure if, if that infrastructure, that would be considered infrastructure improvement, that would be allowable to renew some, maybe, maybe some other water lines that are doing equally bad around the area you might want to look at. But I just wanted to bring that up and apologize, number one, if I roughly, I didn't mean to, you know, demean you in any way. I just, I just had a point of reference up there that, you know, it's Professor of Finance, so I got that good there. And again, thank you for the action on this fellow's house down there and down around there, because that, that's terrible. I'm glad you guys did. They deserve credit for it.
Thank you.
We'll get, we'll get Mr. Brown to look in on that water issue.
Yeah, I'll get with you, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving along to item number six, consideration of ordinance, ordinance to abolish the policy on the property up on Pine Street. Council, what are your wishes on that? Need a motion to abolish property.
I move that we adopt the ordinance, demolish the property.
Yeah, got a motion?
Aye, second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. Okay, very good. I have number seven. We have had to have a major sewer repair down on Bridges Street. And we have a preliminary figure here that we need to approve for LKC engineering. And the amount of $311,600. Is that correct?
I don't have the total project budget in front of me, but it's.
I've got it right here. Okay. Council, what are your wishes on that?
I don't think we have a choice, do we?
We don't have a choice. Just a, yeah.
I wish I could say no and it'd go away. So I guess I just have to say yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. All right. Moving along to item number 7A, which you, everybody's got a copy of it, is the big, big paper. It is the letter of intent and meet conditions. And what it does is it says at the time that we're ready for it that we will get the amount of $6 million in grant money from the federal government. And we will be responsible for the amount of $11,600,000 for a grand total of $17,600,000 roughly.
Yes, that's exactly right, Mayor. I'd like to, if I may, just give Lynn, who's on the phone with USDA, an opportunity to speak briefly to this matter. And I'm going to jump up there and put one of the mics on the phone so that, so that we can, she can hear us and we can hear her.
Lynn, can you hear?
I can hear.
Yeah, we just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak, and Adam and Rob are both here as well. If there's anything you'd like to add before council makes a decision on this matter.
Yes, I don't know if Adam and Rob have anything to say in advance, but I'll be glad to go ahead and get in my presentation if you guys are ready.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Alrighty. Again, I'm Lynn Whittington with USDA Rural Development, and I am so excited to present to you guys tonight the letter of conditions for your wastewater treatment plant expansion project. Basically, what USDA can propose to the city is exactly what the mayor said, pretty much. And that is a loan not to exceed $11,569,000 and a rest grant not to exceed $6 million, per total project cost of $17,569,000. I believe that you all have a copy of the letter of conditions in front of you. I'm not sure of that, but hopefully you do. I just would like to go over the letter of conditions. I'm going to hit just the main points that need to be drawn out tonight. Some of the items I do not cover are items that we've already took care of in the application process. So a lot of what I'm covering tonight are key points and things that we will be looking for from this point forward. So there's some things I'll read kind of verbatim, because they're important, and some things I'm just going to hit the hotspot, so just please bear with me. And if you have any questions, we'll take care of those as we go. Basically, the letter of conditions establishes the conditions which must be understood and agreed to by the city of Hamlet before further consideration can be given to the application. As you know, the project is to expand and basically replace your 1 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant with a new 2 million gallons per day wastewater treatment plant. The rest loans, if we were to make the loans, currently our interest rate is 1.375%. So we will be obligating the funds for the project if the city chooses to at that interest rate. And the city will have the option of taking the lower interest rate at the time of approval and at the time of closing. So if the interest rate was to go down between now and closing, you could take even the lower interest rate at that point and at that time. Tonight, I'm issuing the letter of conditions and asking for you guys to sign the funds if you'd like to proceed. However, it does not mean that we have the funds available right at this moment. We're going to go ahead and handle the paperwork tonight if the city wishes to proceed. And as soon as we have the funds to obligate the loan and grant, then we will issue a letter of approval and send the request for obligation of funds executed to the city. On page two of the letter of conditions, we have the project budget, which details out all the different items and components that brings up your cost to your $17,569,000. You can see that these are all estimates at this time. The repayment schedule, you're looking at 1.375% for 40 years. So that would be your terms for the loan, should the city wish to proceed. The security requirements for your loan would be a water and sewer system revenue bond. The raw revenues that the system generates would be what would be paying the loan back to USDA Rural Development. On page three, we talk about a path, a pre-operated debit payment. Our loan payments that the city makes to USDA will be through a designated bank account and will be drawn automatically from that account on June 1st of each year. The city would have to obtain interim financing to take care of the financing of the system until our permanent loan closes, once the project is complete. The dispersment of funds, all loan funds, all loan funds would have to be dispensed and expended prior to the grant funds. So the loan in the amount of $11,569,000 would be dispersed first, followed by our grant fund of $6 million. And Rural Development must approve all dispersment of all project funds. We're looking at page four. We talk about reserve requirements. We do have a debt service reserve requirement. It's actually part of LGC, the bond anticipation rule. And with a debt service reserve, the city is required to establish and maintain a restricted debt service reserve account in which you will actually make a deposit into a 10% of your annual debt payment each year until you have lawful payment in that account. So basically, you'll put 10% of your payment each year at that account for 10 years. And then, once you get to that point, that one whole debt payment amount will be there and restricted and can only be accessed by USDA approval. And it's there for emergency purposes if for some reason the city was not able to make its payment at any given time. You also have a short-lived asset reserve. This is an assured asset reserve is an account that, that we, we asked that you set up and have and put approximately $102,333 into this account till the balance is at least $1,095,000. This dollar amount came from the approved PER and was established in the preliminary engineering report by your, your project engineer. If the city sees that this amount is not what is needed on a regular basis, you do have the option of adjusting that amount based on whatever the city's needs may be. And at this time, you may already have a capital improvement type account already set up where you are already keeping funds in there for emergency situations or when things come up. So that is something that we can look at as well. So don't let that number and those figures make you think, you know, what is this about? Because it is something that can be adjusted. The debt service reserve, though, is required and restricted, and we must keep that for each year, for 10 years, and establish that account. The city must formally adopt the loan resolution in the amount of $11,569,000, again, should they choose to move forward. It mentions an equal opportunity agreement and assurance agreement right there in that section. However, those were completed when the application was submitted, so those documents would not be necessary tonight. In addition to your loan resolution to accept the loan, you'd also have to execute the water and waste system grant agreement in the amount of $6 million to accept those grant funds. So we would need to be executing that as well. The city must adopt an operating budget and rate schedule for its sewer system that provides enough revenues for the payment of all sewer system operating and maintenance expenses, the proposed repayment of the new USDA loan, and required reserves that we just talked about. Basically, what we're looking at is we expect the sewer system to self-sustain and take care of all of its operation maintenance expenses and any type of debt that the sewer system may have. On page five, the American iron and steel requirement. This is very important to USDA and the federal government. So I'll go ahead and just read verbatim the first paragraph. Section 746 of Title VII of the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2017, Vision A Agricultural Rural Development, Food and Drug Administration and Related Agencies Appropriations Act 2017. And subsequent statutes mandating domestic preference applies a new American iron and steel requirement to obligations made after May 5th, 2017. A lot of these requirements we will be going over once we get to the point of talking about construction and things like that. It's something that will be discussed at length and detail. But the city is ultimately responsible for compliance with AIS requirements. And again, instead of reading everything verbatim on these, on this page, that's something we can discuss further, what the city decides to move forward. All permits prior to advertising for bids, all permits are required for the construction of the project will need to be in place. On page six, professional services and contracts. All contracts or other forms of agreement between the city and professional and technical representatives are required and are subject to USDA Rural Development review in concurrence. Again, there are AIS requirements language that needs to be in the engineering services agreement, things like that. And again, that is something that we provide guidance as we move forward. The construction contract documents, again, we do have guidance and requirements and some rest bulletins and things that the engineer will have to follow in order to submit their construction contract documents. And again, those are also have AIS requirements that definitely have to be in the contract document. The final plans and specs, the project, the final plans and specs, when we get those, we expect those to conform with the scope of the project as it was described and approved in the preliminary engineering report. And final plans and specs shall be submitted to USDA Rural Development for review and approval within six months from the date of this letter. Procurement of construction services and supplies equipment on page seven. The project shall be formally advertised for bids in accordance with Rest Instruction 1780, paragraph 178072B, and state and local laws and regulations applicable to this type of procurement. Our USDA Rural Development State Engineer would have to provide written concurrence prior to awarding if any of the contracts that the city may want to award after bid. Construction monitoring, this is a pretty big project, definitely needs some full-time inspection, and it is required. And services to be provided by LKC. And then, along with construction monitoring, a lot of construction talk and everything will come at a pre-construction conference that is required to be held before construction starts. Page eight, property rights. Prior to advertisement for construction bids, the city must first satisfy evidence that it has or can't obtain adequate continuous and valid control of the land and rights of ways needed for the project. Basically, if there's any land that we're, that the contractor may be working on, if there's any land to be acquired, which in this case there's not. But if there's any type of land that we're going to have to go over that is not city-owned, we need all easements prior to beginning of construction. Project completion, this is a big thing for us. And that is that the project must be completed and all funds dispersed within three years of obligation. After which, the city must submit to the agency a written request for extension of time with adequate justification of circumstances beyond your control. That is something that our national office, especially with those grant funds, that they, if we go past that three years, we'll have to request waivers and let them know what's going on and be able to keep the money so we can complete the project out. going on and be able to keep the money so we can complete the project out. Insurance and bonding, page nine. Insurance and fidelity bond coverage must be obtained as required by North Carolina General Statute and Rest Instruction 1780, paragraph 178039. Those requirements are shown below as items A through E. It is the city's responsibility to assure the adequate insurance and fidelity bond coverage is maintained. The city must also complete a vulnerability assessment and emergency response plan. You guys already may have that done, but if you don't, the USDA will require you to have that. Closing instructions, closing instructions are the loan closing instructions that we will receive from our Office of General Counsel. They basically instruct us on how to close the permanent financing when we close and pay off your interim finances. And closing instructions must be attained prior to advertising the project for bids. The, on page 10, the city has a due diligence number, as we call it, and is registered in what they call SAM, our system for award management. Currently, the city, the city has to keep that expiration date. It's good for usually one year. You have to keep that current as long as we're dispersing money. And so, right now, the city's number expires on 12/4/2021. And sometime prior to that, we'll just need to be sure that we update that prior to that so that it does not expire, so we can continue dispersing funds from the time comes. Audit management reports and accounting methods. This is a very important one in the sense that the annual audits that the city has will need to be sure that they're separating and reporting each water and sewer proprietary enterprise fund and itemized restricted cash accounts by type. For example, that debt service reserve or short-lived asset reserve. We expect the enterprise fund to show all your water revenues, operation and maintenance, and all your sewer operation, maintenance, and revenue. We expect those to be separated in your enterprise fund. And then, some important things on page 11, and that is the environmental mitigation measures. There are actually four mitigation measures that when we went through the environmental process that were identified, that the contractor will need to be to make note of, and we'll need to be sure that we are conscious of those and that we do what we need to do and take those measures to be able to protect the floodplains, the wetlands, and any historic properties and any biological resources. And I think with that, I will go pretty quickly. And if you have any questions, I will take those now and then I will move on.
At any time over this, if this comes into effect, will the interest rates go up? Never, interest rates will never rise on the 40-year?
No.
Once they said it, the interest rate would not rise, is that correct?
I'd like to give Lynn a chance to confirm, but I think in her presentation, she mentioned that the interest rate of 1.375 is the current rate, and we would have the option of getting a lower rate at time of closing, but I don't think that we would get a higher rate. I think we would only take that rate if it was lower. Is that correct, Lynn?
You are correct. Let me say to you our interest rates. Our interest rates change every quarter. Let me say they're subject to change each quarter. So, right now, for, let's see, July, August, and September, this quarter, our interest rates are set, and right now, the interest rate that you guys would be eligible for is the 1.375 percent. We're going to be getting this thing obligated pretty quickly, so that would be your interest rate at this point. So, once the interest rates change every quarter, let's just say when we close this loan in three years and the interest rate has gone to 3 percent, you're going to stay at that 1.375 percent. But if it went down to 1.25 percent at closing, obviously, you'd want to take the 1.25, the lower interest rate. So, you are set at a fixed interest rate of 1.375 percent if you choose to move forward and we obligate during this quarter.
You ever talk about a lot of money there that comes in fast and forward?
Mr. Christian, where are we now as far as being able to comply with all this stuff?
In terms of the USDA requirements, like the financial requirements, or the, like, the operation of the sewer?
This stuff that she's written to us tonight with 11 pages in it, how are we as far as being able?
Yeah, sure. I think that, you know, the first step to comply is to accept the intent to lock in the funds and the interest rate. I think, you know, compliance is something that we've worked through to get to this point. There's been a lot of compliance to even get the award. And we will continue to, you know, it's kind of a, it's a fluid moving process, and we'll continue to meet all the compliance that USDA dictates. But right now, I would say that, you know, we've, we are in compliance. That's how we got to this point, and we will continue to comply.
Our approval right now is on the letter of intent to meet conditions, am I correct?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
At this point, what you're going to do, if the city is interested in moving forward and accepting this loan and grant, what you will need to do is pass a resolution, and I provided that in the package that I sent to the city today. You will need to pass the resolution accepting the letter of conditions. And in that resolution, the city council is authorized to use and Mr. Strickland, the city clerk, to actually execute the documents that are necessary for us to obligate those funds that those funds are tied to the city of Hamlet. And that is the documents that would be included would be that loan resolution, the water and waste system grant agreement, the letter of intent to meet the letter of conditions, and the request for the obligation of course.
Right, well, you kind of caught the cart before the horse there. That was coming up next. We just need to get one resolution at a time done here. I've got both of them. Counsel, what are your wishes on the letter of intent to meet conditions?
I move that we accept the conditions set forth in the letter of conditions by August 10th, 2021, on RUS Bulletin 178027, Loan Resolution Public Bodies for Waste Water Treatment Expansion Project. The mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute all forms necessary to obtain a loan and grant from the USDA Rural Development, including but not limited to the following forms, RUS Bulletin 178027, Loan Resolution, RUS Bulletin 178012, Water and Waste System Grant Agreement, Form RD 194246, Letter of Intent to Meet Conditions, and Form RD 1941, Request for Obligation of Forms, Funds, I beg your pardon, that if the interest rate charged by the USDA Rural Development shall change between this date and the date of actual approval, the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to execute new forms reflecting the current interest rate and revised payments as required by USDA Rural Development, that the city of Hamlet elects to have the interest charged by the USDA Rural Development to be the lower of the rate in effect at either the time of loan approval or the time of closing, that the city of Hamlet hereby agrees to abide by the mitigation requirements in the letter of conditions, and this resolution will become a part of our official minutes of the city of Hamlet's meeting held on this date.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Very good. Okay, next item of business is the acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Funds, the City of Hamlet Resolution for Accepting American Rescue Plan Act Funds, whereas the City of Hamlet is eligible for funding from the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds of HR 1319, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, whereas the North Carolina General Assembly will provide for the distribution of funds to eligible North Carolina municipalities, and whereas before receiving a payment, the city council is required to formally accept the CSLRF funds, whereas revenue received under the CSLRF must only be spent for the purposes authorized by the CSLRF and applicable regulations and by state law, whereas revenue received under the CSLRF must be accounted for in a separate fund and not commingled with other revenue for accounting purposes, and whereas the city of Hamlet must comply with all applicable budgeting, accounting, contracting, reporting, and other compliance requirements for CSLRF funds. Now therefore be it resolved by the city, the council of the city of Hamlet, that we do hereby accept and request CSLRF funding to be distributed by the state of North Carolina, and further resolve that the city of Hamlet affirms that the CSLRF revenue will only be used for the purposes prescribed in the CSLRF and in U.S. Treasury Guidance in 31 CFR Part 35 and any applicable regulations and in accordance with state law, and further resolve that the city of Hamlet will comply with procedures created by the North Carolina General Assembly and the U.S. Treasury Department to receive funds under the Act, and further resolve that the city of Hamlet will account for CSLRF in a separate fund and not commingle it with other revenues for accounting purposes, and will comply with all applicable federal and state budgeting, accounting, contracting, reporting, and other compliance requirements for the CSLRF funds, and further resolve that the city of Hamlet designates and directs the city manager to take all actions necessary on behalf of the city council to receive the CSLRF funds. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I move that we adopt.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise. Very good. Nancy, thank you, if you're still there.
I'm still here.
Okay, we're done.
All right, thank you. You guys can get in.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Mayor, if I, if I may, real quick, before we move along, if there are any questions for Adam Kiker and Rob McIntyre of LKC, they're here. I just wanted to, you know, give you guys an opportunity before you depart.
Where do we go from here?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Again, I'm Adam. This is Rob. Rob is to be commended. He's done the lion's share of the work here, and your staff, big kudos to them, mass team, your finance team, your public works team. Lynn and our, the USDA rep Lynn, we've worked together for a long time. $6 million is by noticeable margin the largest individual grant award that we have seen for this type of project. So, congratulations to you. It certainly is a big deal for the city and a big deal to the success of this project. Mayor, to answer your question, the hard part is over and the fun part begins from here. So, our team will spend the next 12 to 15 months developing design drawings, technical specifications, and all the documents necessary to comply, so that the technical aspects of the project comply with what you just approved. And then, we would anticipate construction on a project of this magnitude to take 15 to 18 months. So, while we will be happy to come before you again and provide periodic updates at Mayor your or at Mr. Christian's request, you may not see our faces, but we will be interacting with your staff on a weekly, if not daily, basis over the next year or more. We're very thankful to be involved. We're excited. Again, congratulations to you, and I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you may have.
When do you think we'll be ready to go to bid?
I would expect in that 12 to 18-month range, or sorry, 12 to 15-month range.
From now?
From now, yes, ma'am.
So, basically, where, you think we can get within their three-year deadline?
I wish we could have talked to Lynn about that before, but we will manage that. Yes, the answer is yes. If that is what USDA requires, we will get that done. We will, one of the first things we're going to do tomorrow and into next week is manage that timeframe with USDA. It is extremely tight on a project of this magnitude.
Well, she said there were extensions possible, but I didn't know. I know the design phase sometimes takes as long as construction, so.
It will.
I didn't know if any of that would run concurrently, or do you have to have the whole system designed before you go to bid?
To meet USDA's requirements, we do have to have the whole system designed and then publicly bid the entire design in one package. So, yes, design will be done, permitted, packaged up, and then construction will begin after that.
Okay.
We thank you.
Well, we're very thankful, and we're always available. Matt, of course, will be talking often, but if you would have any questions along the way, just let Matt know, and we'll be glad to come back before you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, I have before me tonight, a mayoral appointment to the Hamlet Housing Authority, item number eight. Mr. Scott Waters was appointed to fill a vacancy that expires on September the 15th of 2021. The Director of Housing Authority has requested that Mr. Waters be reappointed for a full five-year term, and at this time, I will make that appointment. Item number nine, we have before you this month's tax releases in the amount of $420.78 altogether, and that's all vehicles. Okay, what are your wishes, counsel?
Moved it, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise. Counsel, I have before me at this time, item number 10. To the tax collector of the city of Hamlet, you are hereby authorized, empowered, and commanded to collect the taxes set forth in the tax records filed in the Finance and Collections Office and in the tax receipts herewith delivered to you, in the amounts and from the taxpayers likewise therein set forth. Such taxes are hereby declared to be a first lien upon all real property of the respective taxpayers in the city of Hamlet, and this order shall be a full and sufficient authority to direct, require, and enable you to levy on and sell any real or personal property of such taxpayers for and on account thereof in accordance with the law. What are your wishes on this, counsel?
We approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further comments? Not all in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise. Witness my hand, official seal, this 10th day of August, 2021. Item number 11 is the approval of the annual tax settlement. Charges to tax collector, amount of taxes placed into tax collector's hands for the year is $1,980,455.91. All late listing penalties and costs collected by the tax collectors, $3,510.90. All interest on taxes collected by the tax collectors, $32,247.74, for a grand total Credits to the tax collector is $1,859,807.69. Releases allowed are $12,396.60. The principal amount of taxes constituting liens against real property at this time The principal amount of taxes determined to be insolvent and be allowed as credits to the governing body is $25,696.54, balancing out to a total of $2,021,878.27. I need an approval on that.
I need a question.
Yes.
How do we end up with a $5,000 imbalance? You know?
Sure did, didn't it?
Jill can probably answer the question. I don't know. I don't. But, so, are we saying that $1,980,455.91 was the billing? Is that amount of taxes billed?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, and then, the late listing penalties and that, so we were looking at the need to collect $2,016,214.55. I'm just trying to, what's the difference between charges and credits? Are charges what we, they were supposed to get, and credits are what they got?
That's my understanding.
So, we actually collected more than we were charged for this year, part of which I know must have, especially the insolvents, would have been resulting from previous tax years, right? But our actual collection rate is the difference between the $1,984.55 and the $1,859.807. So, what does that give us for a collection rate? I'm just curious.
She's listed 94.08 percent.
I need a motion.
I make a motion, excepted. I make a motion accepted.
Motion to accept annual tax settlement.
Second to approve.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay. At this time, we need to have a discussion with the council regarding facilities and the new COVID situation.
I'd be happy to begin the discussion, Mayor, if I may, just by stating that, you know, we have seen an increase, a dramatic increase in cases in the last several weeks, a couple of weeks at least, and I'm recommending that we go back to requiring masks in all city facilities and also requiring all city employees to wear masks when interacting with the public, just as a preventative measure for the time being, and we've, we've been very adaptable throughout the pandemic. We've, we've continued to work, our staff has done a great job and, and demonstrated that they can adapt, and I think that this is a preventative step that hopefully is a short term step, but I believe it's a necessary one, and barring any objection, that's how I plan to proceed.
Well, I wanted to say that I think the emphasis of what you're talking about is we're requiring anyone coming into our facilities to be wearing a mask.
Correct.
As well as the employees inside, but, you know, we were probably one of the few agencies in this county that didn't go to short days, short weeks, whatever. During the COVID pandemic, our employees worked, did their jobs, remained safe, and thankfully we, it was almost without incident, and I think we owe this to them, to protect them from anything that might be coming through the door, and this is part of the way we can thank them for what they've done for us, and I wholeheartedly approve this action. I think it's absolutely necessary.
I agree.
So we'll kind of let you go by ear then as to how, how the situation gets, and depending on the situation we may next meeting have to restrict a number of people in the council meeting.
Yes, sir, I'll be sure to keep you informed.
Okay. At this item, at this time, we'll move to item thirteen, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief. We've talked a lot about process and procedure and compliance, and I'm just pretty much over the moon with the award that we got. It's really going to set us on a path to do what we need to do to get our system where it needs to be. In addition to that, you know, we're, we're ready to kind of keep this thing moving forward. It is going to be a long term project, so we're going to be hearing about it for a long time, and I appreciate your support getting us to where we are. We did, moving away from the infrastructure and the funding, we did have a really good turnout for soccer registration, so that will be moving forward. The deadline for that was last Friday, we have had a few trickle in and been able to accommodate those, but that season will be starting soon and look forward to those children enjoying that program that we have for them here in Hamlet. Finally, I'll just mention, you know, obviously the county's experienced a tremendous tragedy recently with the loss of Sheriff Clemens and the services were today, and I just want to express my gratitude for all the law enforcement support and emergency services support and just support generally throughout the county, and how proud I am of our employees, fire, rescue, police, that were out there all day facilitating the large amount of traffic that we had in town with that event. It was a solemn moment, but it was one that, it was hard not, it was, it was, I was very proud of our folks and proud to be a resident of Richmond County and a citizen of Hamlet, so I just want to thank our folks for that, and that concludes my report.
Anyone have questions for the manager? Not, we'll begin with comments, counsel, Ms. Covington?
I want to echo your sentiments about the grant. I think that is really exciting, and we know this, financially, we needed a little good news, so I'll take any kind of grant, particularly one of that magnitude, and allow us to proceed with this project, which very possibly could open a brighter future to us, not dependent on the actions of anybody else. I want to mention that when Chip was here tonight talking about the Legion program, I was so proud of the attendance, even though they didn't have the best season in the world, people supported them in the community, and they were clearly pleased and excited about having the program back, and I know we need that field has been dormant, other than simple soccer games on Saturday morning, has been dormant for years, and I hope we can find a way so that by the state tournament of twenty twenty three, we'll not only have an exemplary team, but we will have an exemplary facility. So I think that needs to kind of bump itself up in priorities, because this is obviously something that has a huge community impact, and I too want to extend my sympathy to the law enforcement community, and my thanks to everyone, even the people who came in from counties outside to, to kind of back up their effort of law enforcement so that our law enforcement would have time to grieve, and everybody, as usual, stepped up to the plate, did what they had to do, and I think that shows the very best of what is in our community. We may be small and kind of understated, but whenever there's something of a huge impact like this, they always step up to the plate, and I was proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers?
I'd like to thank the city manager, the mayor, my fellow council members, city employees for all the work and well being of this city and the concern. I'd like to send my condolences to the policemen, to the sheriff department for the loss of our great leader, Sheriff Clemens. He just can't be replaced, and we can get a new sheriff, but you just can't replace a man like Sheriff Clemens was. And I'd also like to say my regrets and condolences to the Conder family, Richard Conder, he's a senator, Hamlet, born and bred, condolences to the Conder family also for that. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Gordon, he's done a tremendous job in bringing the Legion team back to Hamlet, and it is really, really heartfelt to see it, and I heard nothing but kind remarks about it and encouragement, and of the hard work that he has done and commitment he has made for it, and I really personally appreciate that. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Well, I would just reiterate what Mr. Christian has said, Ms. Covington, and Mr. Sellers, I concur with all their comments, I feel the same way. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's been sixteen years in coming on this sewer project, this has been dear to my heart for sixteen years, and I, I've always kept the council's mind on this and tried to get something done on this sewer project, because we could see where it was going, as that we were going to get to the problem, or we were going to have a moratorium, and we were going to be out, so the sooner the better. I'm glad that it's gone this far, thank you to the council, and thank you to the city management for getting this thing on board. I can't say enough in the passing of Sheriff Clemens, he was a friend, he was always available, you could always, he always had a smile on his face, and he is going to be dearly missed, and he is going to be very hard to replace. The Conder family, of course, I knew Richard very well, and he did a lot for the city of Hamlet, especially when he was in the Senate and other state items, and he was always available to us when we needed him, and Conder family, they're going to be missed, and so, you know, the best from us. The, we're looking forward, probably this year right now, we're looking forward to the Seaboard Festival. We're also looking right now at the probability of having the fair, and it's going to be the last week in October. The Christmas parade, we haven't really discussed that yet, so I don't know where we are. We're going to have to do something pretty soon, counsel, because they'll be having to get floats, so if we're going to do it, that's something that we need to give management some.
I believe the Florida hit heavy, though.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking right, I'm thinking right now that we need to go ahead and look at a date for it, first, what, first week of December, whatever. And also, we discussed moving it to a Saturday, am I correct?
I, that, we did, we did discuss a Saturday.
Do you recall it, Mr. Martin?
I don't know if we, I don't know if it was tabled or if it came to.
We did because of the COVID situation.
Yeah, because of the COVID situation.
It would certainly be less disruptive to the school system, because they, they, yeah, well, they decided, you know, they have to let schools out early and all this that and the other so that we can have it, and that would just be less disruption for them.
Okay, the second, the second Saturday of December is the eleventh.
That's late.
Mayor, I'll, I'll check with the float company, I think that we want to make sure that that.
You want to check for November, then?
No, what's the first Saturday?
First Saturday in December would be the fourth.
Is that bad?
Well, we, and the only reason I said that is because we had usually been doing the parade on the second Thursday of the month, December, but in our fourth, what's your one, what, fourth, if you can get it, and eleventh otherwise?
I'd go with the fourth.
Okay.
And they may already be booked, but, you know, if they are, we'll just adapt.
All right, fourth of December. You work on that?
If nothing else, maybe we could move it to a Friday, if we can't get it on a Saturday, they may be committed.
That's a good idea.
And we can move it to a Friday.
Ready football playoffs.
It's always been on Thursday.
Maybe, maybe.
Well, I'll check into all that.
In the afternoon, so that'd be a good excuse.
It's always been on Thursday.
We do need to get it tied down soon as we can, because I've had several phone calls from people that were interested, and I said, well, I'd let them know soon if we got a date.
Tend to the, the fourth.
Okay, yeah, tend to the fourth.
I'll connect with the float company, I think that's one of the, pretty main lynchpin and the whole deal, and get some options for dates based on their availability, and then we can have a discussion about moving forward with it.
Yeah, the Lions Club has pretty much nailed down the last week of October for the fair, but they just haven't got a contract yet. That's where we're all on that.
Last week of October?
Mm-hmm. The, okay, that'd be all I have. Counsel, I would ask for a motion to adjourn if there's no further business.
I'm not the motion, you're the one.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, thank you.